...require the Board of Alderman to make important decisions affecting our town's residents, property and business owners both now and in the future. We ask that you grant each of us the clarity of vision, sight and mind when casting our votes. Provide us with the wisdom to make decisions without favoritism and with the understanding that our votes must benefit the town as a whole. We understand that this is what we've been elected to do. Father, in closing, we also ask that you continue to keep all our leaders and service personnel in your care. In your name we pray, amen.
......
Number four is... ...four. Does anyone here wish to speak about any item that's not on the agenda? Yes, sir. Mr. Parker?
Chris Parker, 51, Pizarro, and I hope that you'll start spraying for mosquitoes and that. I don't know if you are or not, but there's plenty of them out.
We have sprayed twice for mosquitoes. Once, we didn't get the golf course. And the second time, we got the golf course and the streets. And actually, it was scheduled to be done again on Monday. And I called it off because after playing golf and after walking on the streets, I didn't see any mosquitoes. But if they're bad, we'll get it scheduled again. It takes a licensed person to spray using the chemicals that we use. We have asked... Rick Cannon does all of our landscaping, mowing, and so forth. We've asked him to consider sending one of his people to school so that he can become certified. And if we do that, then we would have primary use of that person. He could use his talents elsewhere, but we'd have primary use of that person. Problem we have right now is we don't have primary use of the person. He's for Brownsville, and he's gonna... He goes other places first from time to time. So we had to... Because of that, we had to contract with the pest control company for the first time since I've been there and have an outside agency, outside company come in and then spray. But you think they're still bad? Chris, you think they're still bad?
No, you're working for me.
Okay.
You're in my house, and I'm not allowed to...
All right, we'll get it sprayed again. Anyone else have anything that they would like to... Yes, ma'am?
Jane Rosenman, 1001, Pizarro. Has anyone been mentioning the fact that they are a little concerned about what's going on down here at the Carmen Street entrance exit onto that frontage road now that the Texas has switched around that traffic that has to exit to go on 511? I mean, it carries a lot of truck traffic. And I go back and forth early in the morning and come home with the, you know, the heavy traffic times. And I know they have a sign now at the exit off of the expressway saying, "Exit 45 miles an hour." But I can tell you, people don't drive 45 miles an hour. And you can be there and wait until you see absolutely no car. I mean, you know, you don't see anybody looking like they're coming into the exit off of the expressway or on the frontage road. Pull out, and the next thing you know, you've got a tractor trailer doing about 65 miles an hour about to run over you. And it's scary.
Which one is this?
I'm talking about the one right here across... That pulls out onto that frontage road there here at Carmen. Because, you know, they've changed this around now where the exit is just right there. I mean, it's very, very close to this entrance. And all of the traffic now, you cannot... They closed the exit to 511. So all that truck traffic that goes, heads out to all those trucking companies there on 511 and at the Ford Brownsville, they're all exiting the expressway there, I mean, just right on top of you as you're trying to get out. And it has frightened me so much that, I mean, I have to pull out and feel like I have to just squeal off, you know, and accelerate to about 40 right away, or I'm in peril of somebody rear-ending me that's coming along. And I've gotten to the point now where I just go out of my way to go to the one on Rancho Vialco Drive or Carmen because it's very frightening. And they're just going way too fast. And I don't know... Does our police have any way to be involved in trying to make some presence known there out on the frontage road so that these truckers get the word out? I mean, they communicate, and if they see that somebody's gonna be enforcing that 45 mile an hour, I mean, they probably can't slow them down even more than that. And that's still pretty fast when you consider you're pulling out from a dead stop and that exit is not very far away. But it's a bad accident just waiting to happen.
I think we had the same thing when they first put the exit ramp going to 511 and they put it back at Cortez. We had the same... That merge there was terrible. Then they made it a long merge, and it worked out perfect.
Right.
We might need to do that here. Gene, do we have any jurisdiction at all as to the speed?
No, sir, not on the other side of the road. We try to change it on the other side of the road.
But we could still make that intersection or that merge where it says to the frontage road, the people coming off that, much more convenient. We'll talk to the Highway Department, see if there's not something we can do. And if there's nothing we can do there, we will alert the county and the Highway Patrol that we have a big problem there and contact them and let them maybe monitor it. I don't know whether we'll have any success with that or not.
Well, you know, it may not be too much longer. They're making a lot of progress here at the overpass. So, I mean, you know, if they get that opened up in another couple of weeks or something where people don't, you know, that makes it a little easier for getting in and out. And I don't know which, but it's...
Well, let me tell you some good news on that, and that is that we contacted the Texas Highway Department, and they said that they would have this open by the end of the week. Now, I didn't say that, but they said they would have it open by the end of the week. So that's pretty quick. We ought to do some good there.
Yeah.
Joe?
Joe Rayback from 26 Pizarro has reported this situation. We've already had one accident out on that frontage road where one of the belly dumpsters fall into dirt for the construction, ran into the back of a car, turned on Rancho Vialco Drive. And it was a pretty serious accident. It was a few months ago, but I support the situation. There's people coming off that frontage road, and the truckers are the most guilty. And if they can get out there during rush hour in the morning in particular, that's one of the worst. You know, I think everybody in Rancho Vialco would be much safer if we did that supported.
Yep, okay. Anyone else have anything for discussion other than those items on the agenda? Number five, approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the May 8 meeting, May 15 meeting... Excuse me, the special meeting on May 15, special meeting on May 22, special meeting on May 22. One started at 5, one started at 6. The regular meeting. The special meeting had a special meeting in front of the special meeting. And then the special meeting on May 29. I think you have a copy of those in your packet. Are there any changes needed? Do I hear a motion to approve them as written?
I move we approve the minutes as written for those meetings itemized.
Second? All in favor?
I...
Number six, election of Mayor Pro Tem, President Pro Tem, President. Mayor Pro Tem. I won't lobby, but Gene has done an awfully good job for the last couple of years. And we need to nominate someone and elect that person.
I nominate Gene for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second?
All in favor? Good luck, Gene. You win it again. Consideration approval of resolutions. The Board of Alderman, the Town of Rancho Vialco authorizing the continuation of bank accounts and depository heretofore, establishing and authorizing certain persons to sign checks and other necessary transactions for same.
You missed number seven.
Number seven, investment policy. You have a copy of the investment policy and procedures in the book. Every year after the election, we pass our investment policy. That sounds like I'm lobbying for passage. We vote on whether we're gonna continue the investment policy as we have done historically. Our investment policy has been to receive that interest that we get on our checking account, and we are not investing it in any other securities, bonds, stocks or anything else. So do I hear a motion to continue the investment policy as we have done previously?
Yeah, I'd just like to, I guess, to comment on that, that, you know, the IBC Bank basically pays the town the 90-day bill rate plus 30 basis points, which has been a very, very good return on the town's money, particularly when you consider the fact that we can write checks and do all these things and move money around without any fees or charges and so forth. I think it's an excellent program that they have set up and the city has participated in. And I guess I'd like to make the motion to continue.
Let's go through the motion.
All in favor? One thing is, it says, number two, the investment officers, the mayor, they must attend once at least one trading session related to his responsibility. Well, that's a... I have, but God, lady, what a good session to sleep in. Very boring. Number eight, consideration approval of resolution. The Board of Alderman, the Town of Rancho Vialco, Texas authorizing the continuation of bank accounts and depository heretofore, establishing and authorizing certain persons to sign checks and unnecessary transactions for same. If you... In your book is the resolution. And I think that everyone has signed the depository slip, so do I hear a motion to approve that? Approve the resolution?
I make the motion to approve the resolution.
All in favor? All right. The next one is, review the ballots sent out to 1 through 74 Pizarro property owners on the concrete shelters and drainage projects. When we sent these out, I thought this was a great idea. And I thought, what a good thing, get these returns in, have some indication whether people want to go or not. As they started coming in, I found out it's gonna be like most things are, 50/50, that we would have approximately as many people opposed as four. I mean, everything that you bring up, I guess unless you're giving away something free, everything you bring up is usually comes down about 50/50. We're lucky in this case. We have, on the concrete shoulders, we have 24 ballots returned out of the 74 sent, about a third. And it was voted for 15, against 9. On the drainage, we also, every one of the ballots of those 24 indicated how they voted. And we have 12 for and we have 12 against. So I think that's gonna really lead you to assist in making the decision on which way to go. We have solid foundations on either side that you're voting on. Any comment on any person out here on those ballots? Some of them gave us notes as to why, but most of them were just a ballot return check in yes or no on that.
Okay. My feeling on it is that, you know, with it being 50/50 or so forth, you know, it's an improvement to the town. It'll improve property values there. And I guess I support moving forward with the project.
Could I add one thing as well?
Sure.
And I also feel that given 2/3 of the residents of Pizarro did not respond, that I'm assuming they don't have a big problem with that.
Generally speaking, the people that are against something are the more vocal people, so I would support that, too. We had a bit... Just fortunate, we had a huge rain here when these were sent out. I walked... I don't know about anyone else. I walked Pizarro during that time. And there were three yards that were underwater. Between number two Pizarro and the parking lot for the club was a lake. As that lake goes down, it became a perfect breeding ground for mosquitoes. The houses went down a lot faster than that one area did, but still, they were underwater, all the way underwater, three of them. Now, we got one back that person says, "Gosh, I don't have a drainage problem." That person may not have a drainage problem, but sure may be causing their neighbors to have a drainage problem. So I don't... I don't know how to... If you don't mind, Mr. Parker, I'm gonna use you as an example. He has a drainage pipe, even though in the cursory review that we sent out his letter, it said he did, and it was gonna cost him this amount of money. So we may have some adjustments that need to be made. At your house, you already have drainage in. There's no way to charge you $300 or $600 or any other figure when you already have the drainage put in. So there would be some adjustments that would need to be made. I have a hard time telling someone they're gonna have to pay for this and their fixed income and have only enough money to live off. On the other hand, I totally at 100% support putting the drainage in and the concrete shoulder in. So...
Mayor?
If we... It's one more little thing. If a hardship were proven to me, if it was, then I think either one would back the fact that we do it and give them some assistance some way in the financial aid, either by extending the terms to three years rather than one year or some way allow that to be done. But I think the project's too important not to do. No, I'm sorry.
No, we needed that clarification. I guess what I'm wondering, is this a package deal? If we're voting on this evening, are we voting for the concrete shoulder and the drainage? Or is that something that will separately be dealt with with VIMUD?
I don't think... I may be wrong in this, and Dan, you correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we can vote on the drainage.
I didn't think so.
I think we can only vote on...
That's their project. That's their project.
May I make a comment?
Please do.
If the vote stays 12 to 12 or something of that sort, I don't think mud would take on the drainage. In fact, one of the people said, "I don't have a drainage problem." And we told him what we needed to do, and he said, "I'll see you in court." I'm not gonna get into one of those kind of hassles where everybody who doesn't have a drainage problem wants to go to court to protect themselves. I am appalled at what people around here will not do for their neighbors who may have a drainage problem. But I'm not gonna try to solve it for them. And if they get flooded in a hurricane, I'm just gonna tell them, "You voted it down." 12 to 12 is not enough out of 74. All 74 people should have responded to that if we really have a problem. And I don't presume that number two Pizarro responded because I don't think they're ever here. They probably don't worry much about drainage. And that's all off the golf course.
No? Two Pizarro did.
Did they?
Yes, but they voted for it.
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
They and number four or five always swim every time they...
Five voted for it also.
Sure. They have a terrible problem.
Well, I have a question. If we were to vote on the shoulders and VIMUD would be the ones taking care of the drainage, wouldn't it be important to have both things at the same time rather than... If we were to approve the shoulders, for example, and we're gonna have the drainage addressed, wouldn't that be a problem?
I... If we're gonna do drainage, I'd like to do it at the same time. We're not gonna do drainage, so we're gonna do the concrete shoulder. But this probably has nothing to do with what we're discussing because we can't vote on drainage. But if VIMUD is responsible for drainage, then they're responsible for drainage. It seems to me.
And it would be up to the residents to contact VIMUD to address that.
That's what it would seem like to me, but I...
If they want to pay for it individually, we'll do it.
I'm sorry?
You know, if they... If individuals want to pay for it, we'll do it, you know, for them.
But I don't understand, Mr. Lindeman, but again, they don't... This discussion is how you can be responsible for drainage and then charge them to fix the drainage.
Because in most cases, they didn't put in the proper stuff to begin with. And if the person who really is responsible for those lakes is the golf course, if it didn't come off the golf course, they wouldn't have a drainage problem. Probably the easiest thing would be to put a wall up there.
Some of the lots were on the...
All along the carpet.
Some of the lots that were flooded in total were on the Resaca side.
Yes, and that's a different problem. Many of the lots that are flooded on the Resaca side are due to the fact that the lake on number three gathers all the water off the golf course from everywhere. There are big drainage ditches that put it all in number three pond, and the pond overflows. And especially Don Ely's house is low enough that that pond comes close to invading his house. That pond has six inches of water. Nobody has ever dug it out to even hold the water that comes off the golf course. And the drainage for the pond goes the other way. But the land on that side of the pond is not high enough to make the water go the other way. It comes back up in the swales. Now, that one, we may tackle because of the tremendous problem it makes when we get a big rain. But the club also ought to be digging that pond out and getting three feet or four feet of depth to that thing so that it would hold the water that comes off the golf course.
Mr. Lindeman, am I correct then in hearing you say that if those 12 individuals that are for the drainage came to you as independent residents, you would address those particular...
We would, but we get into the problem that some of those problems are created by the neighbor next door who won't put a pipe under his driveway.
And I think anytime we do any kind of construction in the area, I know just as homes are built across the street from me on 29, the one directly across the street, fill was brought in. And when that fill's brought in and that home is built, I started to flood. It wasn't until then. And I think now you just put some fill in next to Joe's house. And I'm looking at that, wondering, well, what's going to happen now that that area is built up to the surrounding?
It's an interesting point. The actual high point is right near that area, so it probably will run off everywhere, every other place. That's one of the high points of the other thing. I hope Joe don't get much of it.
Jim?
Yes, Jim?
I don't expect to have any problems with it. And I do have a drain put in on the side of my yard that runs through Resaca, and I have an eye point. I agree wholeheartedly with you about the Resaca on hole number three. I know that's causing a problem, and there's several people right there, but the Ely's are the particular ones that are... It's going into their house. And I don't know if there's anything that the city council can do to encourage cooperation with the owners of the golf course to deepen that so that we don't have a flooding situation.
Just about as much as we have with VIMUD.
No, we...
You have to take care of the drainage problem to get the club...
We've got a lot of cooperation on the VIMUD.
No. It's not this... Joe, if we want... We have a drainage problem. There's no question about it, right, Mr. Lindeman? On one to 74 Pizarro, we have a drainage problem. Is it gonna get fixed?
No.
Why is it gonna get fixed? Because we had 24 returns that were split 12 to 12. But I'm gonna... And you correct me if I'm wrong. I'm gonna say that if we had had 75% for, 25% against, and one person says, "I'll see you in court if you do anything," we would have still said, "No, we're not gonna do that, fix the drainage." Am I right, all or close?
I don't think that's right. We would go do it.
All right.
Because I think we'd win.
Maybe I'm wrong there.
I think we'd win in court.
I think you would, too.
How would we be... How are we, at this point, though, going to communicate with the residents about the outcome of the survey? Are we sending something else out, or are we gonna leave the residents hanging with, well, are we going to have a drainage test?
We have a website, and we have email that we send out. The rest of it, you can call up here and ask. Are we gonna go by all 74 or send them alone? We sent a ballot. We got 24 responses.
Mr. Bear, when you say you have a website, what exactly is on that website to detail the problem to those that aren't very knowledgeable to it?
There's not anything to detail the problem?
Right.
No, there's not anything.
You know, I'd imagine there'd be... If there was any kind of surveys that could be maybe shaded, showing low-lying areas that could maybe be put on the website.
We have had and sent out to all the people that have emails, a special meeting to listen to this. We've invited the people from Pizarro 1 through 74 down here to a meeting individually, knocked on their doors twice, excuse me, once. In the second tab, we sent a letter to every one of them. Now, you can't drag them in here. You can't drag them in. And if I were Mr. Lindeman in this case and only had 24 respond out of 74, I would take a very neutral attitude towards them. If they didn't care to respond, I don't care to do anything. If they had responded in the negative, then you can say that. If they had strongly responded in the positive, you can say that. But the city of Rancho Vialco has a drainage problem. And what are we gonna... What, if anything, can we do about it? We have a drainage problem. Should we not care that the citizens have their yards flooded? I don't know. Maybe we shouldn't. It's not our problem. Wash your hands of it. Have a heart, Dan. Yes, ma'am?
I realize nothing can be done about that, but it causes me some thought about... I guess I would like to be... To have some kind of a better understanding that if we go ahead and do the curbing...
Concrete shoulder.
Right. And we don't do anything about the drainage, where do we stand with what's gonna happen then as far as the drainage? Is that... Is there a possibility it may make the drainage somewhat better? Is it a possibility it may make the drainage somewhat worse? Or do we assume it's just gonna have no effect whatsoever on the drainage problem we have? I think that's important to address because I think we need to be careful knowing that going into this, if VIMUD is telling us, due to the response of the people who were polled, they're not going to tackle that except on an individual basis, then we're forewarned, if you will, that we're not gonna be doing anything to improve the drainage problem. So I think we need to be sure about where that leaves us if we go ahead with the shoulder paving. Because if we create a worse problem, oh, boy. I mean, you know, you don't hear from these people, but if it gets worse and you do that and you've changed anything, then they're gonna be in here, and they're gonna be wanting to wring everybody's neck.
I can't imagine that the concrete shoulder on are gonna make much difference at all. It will take a few ruts out that are probably collecting some of the water.
But shouldn't engineering be able to tell us that for sure? Or, or at least where we would inquire, where we have some, some trained, knowledgeable person who's going to have, have advised us or given some kind of a professional, trained opinion so that if, if something does happen, then you can say, "Well, you know, we, we did this, and to the best of our knowledge and how we were informed, we, we were led to believe or assured, or whatever, that, that it was not gonna increase an already known problem." I'm just concerned about the exposure for the town if, if that should be the end result.
May I comment again? Mr. Burkhart is a reigning civil engineer, and he certainly could advise the town on whether there would be any difference. My own opinion is there wouldn't make any difference to have an eighteen-inch block there that would, would affect drainage 'cause most of the drainage is probably three feet inside of that at the, at the very least, and some even further.
And among the witnesses indicated that there's no drainage issue.
Bob could give you his opinion, but I'm only an old, old electrical engineer. I don't know anything about that.
And would it hold true then, if we're installing the concrete shoulder to protect the edge of the road, that that's exactly what it would help to do in the case of some flooding?
Not from a flood, I don't, the grass is gonna trap some of the water, and the concrete block's gonna take that away because the, the grass is no longer gonna be up on the, on the asphalt. The more what it's gonna do is protect the eroding of the asphalt.
That's, that's where I'm going with that.
Yeah.
I have a question, Mr. Lindemann.
Yes?
If anyone, if we have a hurricane, I know we'll get flooded, but we, we had rain of six inches the other day, and Cortez got flooded in some areas. Would it be possible for someone to say, "Hey, you didn't address the drainage issue, so we'll sue you"?
Well, we could do the same thing with Cortez that we did with Pizarro. Do the people feel strongly enough about their flooding problems to do something about it?
Yes, well, I was thinking that you're saying they don't, you know, they don't feel compelled to address the problem and saying we need the drainage addressed. Well, what if you don't address it? And people come and say, "You didn't address it, so now we're gonna sue you anyway." That's another one, isn't it?
Well, you gotta choose whether they have governmental liability, but they are responsible for the drainage.
For the drainage, yes.
Now, some, they have an easement for that drainage ditch. If someone blocked their easement, such as by, by building a driveway without a pipe, they could deal with that. And that property owner should be responsible for that. But if it's a maintenance of the ditch, well, they're responsible to do that.
Who's responsible?
It's my understanding that B MUD many years ago assumed that from the city. That B MUD is now, has the drainage authority and responsibility in Rancho. So simply that the ditch needs to be, have maintenance done, that maintenance could be done. But obviously, their easement would be prior to somebody trying to build that driveway. If someone builds and affect a dam across the ditch, then that property owner oughta, oughta pay for that.
What if the pipe wasn't put in because it wasn't required by B MUD when they approved that driveway?
And yet it was a violation of the easement?
It was a violation of the city ordinance.
Well...
The town ordinance.
Probably, I mean, the, the property owner in that case...
The town didn't enforce it. B MUD approved the driveway and the...
The property owner has an obviously equitable argument. You should've told me. But there are cases that say that the town does have the right to go back on an issued building permit and say, "We made a mistake. You need, you need to fix this to get in compliance with the ordinance, even though we approved your building permit."
Right, that's what we do that?
Yes, you can.
That's what I, that was my question, 'cause there is an ordinance that you need to put a pipe, in the case of pipe, under the driveway. There is an ordinance, and couldn't we enforce that ordinance?
In fact, there's some cases out there that would strike anybody that's not a lawyer as unfair, where people have got three-quarters way through their construction, and the town said, "Oh, wait a minute, we made a mistake."
So that may be one, or one way we could address a portion of the drainage problem. Not all of it, not the swales, but at least we could ensure that the water could flow.
But it seems to me that if B MUD's got the drainage easement, then it's B MUD that would have to take that action.
None of those are town ordinance.
If, if, but the ordinance is really for their benefit, if they have the drainage responsibility.
And that's the more costly, of all the, the drainage, the work that's gonna be done, the most costly is the drainage pipes, wouldn't it? And the driveways?
Yes.
And a neighbor could do that, too. I mean, I hate to promote litigation among neighbors, but if my yard floods because my neighbor doesn't have a pipe under his driveway, I could...
But that would only hold true for those homes built after the ordinance came into effect. So we'll naturally have some non-conforming...
Oh, there might be some kind of grandfather. I have to look at the ordinance.
When was the ordinance written?
I don't recall. I will look that up, but I don't recall. Oh, excuse me, Ms. Rayman. What I was gonna say in addresses to Daniel to, and, and the board, is that some of these homes that have a drainage problem that do not have a drainage pipe underneath their driveway are thirty years old or thirty-five years old. They were built before, you know, they were, they were built before a lot of the ordinances were in, in effect. For one thing, their houses are very low. They, they were built before the, the ordinance about being eighteen inches above the crown of the road. They didn't have to put in drainage pipes. They didn't have to do this. So if you're gonna go back, you know, you got, you got some instruction on Pizarro that it does have a problem. The construction was done thirty-five years ago, before the ordinance existed. All right, let's move on to pass the drainage side. The next, number ten, is the consideration and action of the ordinance for the town of Rancho Viejo declaring this necessity for ordering the improvement of a portion in... I guess I can read it all. A portion of Pizarro Avenue and Town of Rancho Viejo approving plans, specifications for such work approving, the advertising for bids, directing, preparing the estimates and engineer roles, following the procedures provided by chapter three thirteen of the Texas Transportation Code determining that a part of the cost should be borne by the town and that part of it shall be borne by the abiding properties and owners thereof, provided for the assessment of the portion of the costs performed by the property owners and for fixing up a lien to secure payment of such assessments, stating that the time and manner proposed for the payment of all such costs, provided for the execution of voluntary contracts for an assessment between the town and individual property owners and directing the town secretary to cause a notice of the enactment of this ordinance to be filed in the official records of Cameron County, Texas. Any discussion on that? Do I hear a motion to either approve or table or debate this, this ordinance?
I make a motion, do we approve?
Your second.
Second.
All in favor? Motion's been approved. Consideration, action on awarded contract for concrete shoulder installation. So we just voted that we're gonna do the concrete shoulder installation. And now we need to consideration, action on awarded the contract. On these bids, we have three bids. P and G Construction's total price was sixty-two thousand. G and T's paving company was a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. And R and R paving was a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred. P and G's was eight dollars a foot. The other two was, one of them was thirteen dollars and ninety-nine cents, the other one was fourteen dollars a foot, linear foot. All of them are required to submit their plan for doing this, which includes saw cutting the highway, putting the concrete shoulder in at two feet where they can, where there's driveways, mailboxes, or other things that they can't do to go just to the width of the mailbox or other, other items that are there.
Did P and G do the P M O work?
P and G did the P M O work. To me, it's absolutely no brainer. That's forty, forty-six thousand dollars lower than the next lowest bid.
I, I make a motion, we approve P and G's.
Second.
All in favor? Consideration of number twelve. Consideration approval of amended sign ordinance.
I looked at that ordinance, what changes have been made?
It's been completely rewritten.
Could I speak to that?
I wish you would speak to the whole question. As a matter of fact, if you don't mind, in addition to speaking about the changes, I would like to know why we need a sign ordinance. I didn't know we had a sign problem until we put the sign ordinance in a couple of years ago. I still don't know that we have a sign problem. And it seems to me that if we could outlaw those signs that we know we don't want, a trailer flashing lights sign, a, a big flag sign and so forth, that we wouldn't need to have all this. But I'm gonna shut up and let you talk.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that, first of all, I, I do want to acknowledge Bridgette Newbauer because I know she worked six months on the sign ordinance that we have in place right now. It's been in place for about eighteen months. What we're finding is that it's lengthy, it's about twenty pages long. That includes the definitions and the list of signs that are prohibited. It, it could be, it, it's not user-friendly. It's very difficult to read. We were asked to simplify, and as part of the master plan, it was something that we planned to address. I worked with Alderman Garza, Sonia Richardson worked on it, and this was as part of the strategic planning committee. We have cut it down to the ordinance itself is about four and a half pages long. Now, the, the whole document is about ten because we still have our definitions and the list of signs that are prohibited. We really used the, the framework of the current one. So there, you're, you're exactly right, Mr. Hubbard, there aren't a lot of changes. The format is different. We did take a few things out when you're talking about a, a percentages of signs. We just put in measurements and square footage. So those are some of the changes that we made. We also made some clarifications on some of the definitions, the definition between flag and banner. Even the industries are fuzzy on that one, but we think we have something that is workable now for Rancho Viejo. Do we need a sign ordinance? I'm of the opinion that we do need a sign ordinance. I'm seeing more and more little signs pop up in the area. There's some on Carmen, some on Pizarro for businesses that, well, I don't even know what they're for. And, and I'd like to have some type of restriction, or I'd like to see or offer that we see some restriction on how long contractor signs can be left up. Sometimes a contractor builds a house or does some work and the sign is left up for six months. And the same holds true for estate sale and garage sale signs and those types of things. I do think we need some type of sign. Is, is what I'm proposing perfect? Most likely not. But we can look at it. I agree with the mayor, you can look at it both ways. You could either just go by your list of signs that we are not going to allow in Rancho Viejo or adopt the, the sign ordinance that is proposed.
In your opinion, on the, on the sign ordinance we have right now, we have not, other than compliance, we have not enforced it.
That's exactly right.
And the reason why is we, you know, excluding Cheryl, we don't have anyone smart enough to enforce it. No, excluding the chief, too.
I think...
Both of them are here. But I couldn't enforce it. This one, other, other than needing to take measure and, and all of that...
Well, and if we say that a real estate sign should only be eight feet back, you know, if it's seven or six, you're gonna, but what I'm looking at are those real estate signs that are right on the edge of the road.
Yeah.
I think that it adds not only to the... I think this is enforceable. I do. I think it's very readable. I think if you hand this to anyone, that they would be able to understand that. Yes, please.
When we worked on the sign ordinance, it was real lengthy, like Alderman looked and said, and it was redundant, repetitive. This, you can glance at it, look at it, and it's more clear what is expected. And whereas the other one, you have to spend a lot of time reading and going through the same things, and you're confused whether you should do this or not.
And in parts of it, for instance, we said no flags were allowed in Rancho Viejo. But we allow flag poles under ordinance eighteen, so we have a conflict right there. So I, I do think it's clear. I, I'm thinking also that we need a signed ordinance as we look at the possibility of more and more construction, especially along seventeen thirty-two.
It's definitely, it's definitely more readable, there's no doubt. The way it's broken out by section, I like also, where it applies to this or applies to that. The definitions are definitely in hell. The only way we'll know whether it's enforceable or whether we're gonna have people say, "Well, mine auto apply because of this," as they did with the other sign ordinance, is to put it in effect. But I'm not sure we need a sign ordinance, but if we do need a sign ordinance, I definitely would rather try to take this sign ordinance and apply it to Rancho Viejo than the sign ordinance we have. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I'm just gonna throw in my seven cents word from ten years as being on the board for the town of South Henry Island. And I can't begin to tell you the number of times we battled out and sometimes even fisticuffs practically at town hall and all the pubs and the bars and all the little gathering coffee spots on the island dealing with the pros and cons of a sign ordinance. I will tell you that. It was debated strongly, passionately, and for a long period of time. Practically every term, we had an election every two years. I mean, you know, it was just always something that was going on. And they do have a sign ordinance. They still wrestle with problems associated with the sign ordinance. But I think that, to a large extent, the problems they still have to this day about the sign ordinance is that the elected officials were not bold enough or tough enough to kind of step up to the plate and aggravate a few vocal people who were complaining about the sign ordinance to finally try to work one out that was doable and enforceable and, and pass it. Because even though it was still kind of out there on the fringes, nothing was done until it got so egregious, they were forced to do it. And the problem with that has been, and that's what they're dealing with today, is that they waited so long to try to get a handle on it and to rein in Katie Bar the Door and whatever creativity juices are out there for what people could do. And so by the time that they finally said, "Okay, we've gotta do something. We look like, you know, a carnival, you know, we look like, it's awful." And, and they were, they were getting negative comments about it with tourism things and, and, and a lot of different groups, environmental, everything, because it got so gaudy, so awful. I mean, really, just almost pornographic signs, I mean... I mean, blitz, it was like a little Las Vegas in some places and not the better parts of the Strip. You know, so they passed the, the sign ordinance. But the problem is, everything that's already there is grandfathered. And you can't do anything about it unless you have a hurricane and it blew down. That's the only way you were gonna get rid of it. So I can tell you, there were people who just prayed, okay, a category five, please come through here to kind of clean out the trash. And, you know, now every time they try to tighten it up and to do something about it, they get all these people who know that if they, if they do make it, you know, that, that everybody who is gonna be affected, or they puts up a sign and the town goes to them and says, nope, you can't do that. That's against the sign ordinance, violation of so-and-so. Then they start screaming and they go get an attorney and they come in about, what about this guy? What about this guy? What about this guy? And they come up with fifty different signs that are in violation of the sign ordinance. And so everybody just kind of gives up and says, okay, okay, okay. You know, it's obviously, you know, we're gonna let, let him get away with it. And so it's a self, it just perpetuates itself. So if you think it's gonna be a problem and you want to have some controls on the, the tone and the look of this community, you're just, you're gonna have to address it at some point, because I can tell you, it only gets worse. And then it gets unmanageable.
Yes? Chris Davis, five oh one. I'm not sure how a lot of that applies to this area, since we're primarily a residential area and not a business area. I wasn't, I'm not clear on how the committee resolved the disparity between flags and flag poles. I'm interested to know what that may have been, the resolution, or the proposed resolution for that.
I, I actually, and with the help of Mrs. Eralda McGarza, I reviewed several other sign ordinances and looked at how they described the, the difference. Let me pull that up and I'll be able to, let's see, we are, number seven. No. I'll find it for you.
Twelve.
Twelve, twelve, twelve. And, and what our concern was, we have a lot of people that wanna put Easter flags out, holiday flags out, A and M flags out. And how are we going to address all of that? So our definition of a flag is a rectangular piece of cloth intended for political, governmental, or social communication of distinctive color and design to be hoisted on a pole or mast or hung over a balcony. Advertising banners fall outside the definition of flag. Now, if you look at banner, it's a long strip of cloth, paper, vinyl, or other material draped or stretched between two anchor points, usually bearing a slogan or emblem, and used for decoration or a slogan. Brand awareness or price advertising. It's often used in brand openings. So that's our distinction, is primarily how they're, they're hung.
Being a layman and not an attorney, where do Easter flags and A and M flags then fall under that proposed ordinance?
It, they are flags.
They are allowed?
Yes, they would be allowed.
Okay, that, that clears up one question I had. What was the concern with residential signs, the for sale, the real estate signs? As if they currently exist and are used today?
It's primarily placement and leaving them up after the sale of a home for one length. That's about the only thing we've changed in regards to that. Much of what was in the, the, what is, what is in the current site ordinance, we did not change. We may have added to it a little bit. For instance, how many feet should they be set back from the road? Because we're seeing more and more real estate signs, and not our local businesses, but businesses from outside our community that are putting them right on the edge of the road. I think it's a safety hazard and it adds to visual clutter.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You, you made the comment more than once this evening so far. We've got a sign ordinance. We've never had violation. We've never enforced it. That you don't understand why we need it. If we're not gonna enforce it, why are we gonna have one?
Well, I agree.
Would be my comment.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why I asked. It's useless to have a law if you're not gonna enforce it.
Yeah. That's why I asked. Ms. Luden said she thought this was enforceable.
My hope is that a more readable sign ordinance would be enforceable. Right now, our current ordinance, you have to kind of wade through and see that, for instance, flash stacks is in violation, or the open-closed neon signs have been in violation. Those types of things.
And apparently, again, another question, you talked about there's a flag in the banner. Is somebody gonna get fined if they put up a congratulations, my daughter just graduated from college banner?
No, that's a temporary-
For a party?
And, and the same with a grand opening. For instance, the deli has a banner up now. For grand openings and special events, that's a different story.
I agree with you about some of the, out of, you know, Brownsville or outlying areas, they're putting their signs in front yards and right on the curb. We used to have an ordinance, or part of the ordinance was, you couldn't even have a sign. You'd have a little small stand with a sticker, you know, or a sheet on your house and stuff. I'm not against a sign ordinance. I just wanna have something that's enforceable. And we're gonna do it. Do it.
I do agree that it's very friend, readable friendly. It's very easy to follow, very self-explanatory, actually. And I also would like something smaller than thirty pages, if we're gonna have anything.
Right. And I agree with that. I would like to hear, these signs are not allowed. That's what I'd like to hear.
I'm really sorry I, I suggested that to you initially.
Yeah, you're stuck.
Yeah, it's stuck.
But I, I, this ordinance is, is readable and enforceable. We can modify it as we need to when we find out someone comes here to with this problem, or this problem, this problem. We've read the thing, it's not addressed. We can always modify it.
As I said, is the-
But it's surely more readable and more enforceable than what we're currently having.
Is it perfect? I'm sure not. I'm sure we probably missed a few things, and, and we'll only know that later. But I, I do believe strongly that we need a sign ordinance, especially with the increase in commercial properties, both here and there, down at the other end of Carmen.
You hear a motion to adopt ordinance one fifty-seven A as our new sign ordinance?
I make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the sign ordinance.
Second? All in favor? Motion approved. I do know that there was a lot of hard work within, in preparing this. And under, with the same standard that we needed to be able to enforce it. Consideration approval of a brush removal ordinance. I don't think that anyone has read this. So would y'all mind voting on it in the dark?
Is it enforceable?
This is enforceable, yeah. Here's, you've got it in front of you. But, but here's what I'm trying to get accomplished with this, for the brush. We can send out a ten-day letter. We send out a letter. They have ten days to comply with it. If they don't comply with it, we can then remedy the situation, charge them, put a lien on their property, and move on. Cutting grass is what we usually use this for. And that's great. We have a lot, we have Brent Cannon. We call him up, hey, go on, do it. One twenty-six Pizarro and cut the grass. And we charge him. We put the lien, charge up the lien, and put it on the property. And when the property's sold, or when they wanna clear the lien, they do it. Brush is a little bit different, Rob. We don't have the facilities to take away a pile of brush. We don't have the people to do that. Individually, once a time, we can. Now, historically, on those people that we send the letter out to, they take care of it within that ten-day timeframe. And it's done. So that means it's out there for ten more days. There's no fine. And it was an eyesore for that period of time. The, um, Pizarro, Cortez, Zapata, and Balboa. Just as to see how well all of our people, after two years, have learned to put their brush out on the town. There were many, many that were out there. I don't recall the number, but it, it had to be over twenty-five. Today, Cheryl went down to Sorro. Unfortunately, she didn't go yesterday. She went today. And that's seven days in advance of pickup. You could tell that many of the piles of brush had been out there for more than just today. It was terrible. De Sorro was the worst street we had. What street do you live on, Mr. Lindemann?
Santa Ana.
Good thing, but.
I've got my brush hidden.
So I had Mr. Renfro rewrite this ordinance to allow us to do both. Send ten-day letters, or on the eighth day, if it's out there more than seven days in advance of pickup, that we can cite them. I think we need it. It's somewhat similar to Brownsville.
Correct?
Somewhat similar to Brownsville. I would like to try the ten-day letter. But if we have repeat offenders, go ahead and cite them. And this gives us the flexibility to be able to do them. Any questions on any of them?
I do have a question. I, I, and I apologize, I haven't been able to read it in its entirety. Did you address tree stumps or anything like that? Any dead tree stumps? Or is that going to be under, if we do have a landscape-type ordinance?
No. The only addition was the brush on the street. And in fact, ninety-eight percent of this is the existing ordinance.
The existing ordinance.
Section six is what it's at.
But I've got a problem there, too, is that our contract with G M S says that anything larger than five cubic yards won't be picked up. They don't pick up anything that's heavier than what one reasonable man could lift. But that's not in our contract. I don't know where they came up with that. I'd like, what I'd like to do is trade off a weight for an expansion of the five cubic yards. Maybe go to nine and a half cubic yards. And you don't have to pick up anything that weighs more than fifty pounds. But that has nothing to do with, with this. So I would like to enact this ordinance that is the same as what we have currently on the ten-day. But with the addition of not being able to put it out more than seven days in advance. And if you'll read number six, that's the one that has changed or been added to enforce the in advance of seven days. Yes, sir? Greg, you made a comment when you brought this ordinance up that they haven't had a chance to read it. I feel it's unfair if y'all are gonna have to vote on something that they have had time to read completely. We've got some new aldermen that may not even be aware of what you all, uh, ordinance said. I agree with what you wanna do, but I believe that it's fair and proper that you aldermen have a chance to read it. So, and come back.
I, I would like to say you are just adding the one section, though, and I think most of us. We did go through a, a rather lengthy orientation, and we should all be aware of our, the ordinances on our books. I think the only newcomer here is Alderman Garza. Do you have a problem with addressing it tonight?
I do have a comment. As soon as they picked up the brush, next day, someone put out a big pile of brush on Cortez. And it, it really is an eyesore and it deviates our properties. So if that's the only section, because we have gone over the other sections, I, I would, I would agree that we do need to give them a notice. And then if they're repeat offenders, then fine them the notice.
Okay, let's make, Luke.
I wanna make sure everybody understands. It says two different things. It says if you put brush out more than seven days before the pickup, you violated the ordinance. Now, that has two potential consequences. The first, if you could get a citation right then, no notice. You violated the ordinance, hundred dollar fine. The second consequence is the city can go pick it up and dispose of it at your expense. That requires a ten-day notice. The city has to tell you, you've got ten days to dispose of it, or we're gonna do it and charge it for it. But you could, under the way, you could be cited. If you put it out more than seven days in advance, you could be cited right then. That would be easy enough to change that, to say you do get a warning first. But that is not what this says.
Does that, like the club mows the grass and they just put it out in front and usually pick it up the following day? It sits out there for twenty-four hours, man. Does that, does that mean that, that's in violation of the ordinance?
Technically, yes.
Technically, it is. Would it be cited? We would have, we have a list of all of the properties that are being done by those people that took the, the brush away. But it's my opinion, I don't care what this club doing it, or who's doing it, they ought to pick it up that same day. And they ought to come right behind it and pick it up. I don't care who's cutting your-
I, I am listening to what counsel has to say, and I do feel that it should be written that we are going to send out a notice first, and then for repeat offenders, issue a citation. Because if it is, as, as you indicated, written that we would have the choice either way, some may get cited, some may not, and then we might be looking at, at different issues there. Could we correct it tonight and, and vote on it? Or is that?
Correct it?
Well, I, I think it would be important that everybody knows what they're voting on. Yes, you could make a change to it right now and vote on it. That would be legal, as long as everyone is comfortable that they knew what they were voting on. Or you could table and regulate things.
I'd like to know what the other aldermen have to, to think about, having an actual process of, of-
Well, I'm very much in favor of it.
Yeah, I am too.
And I will say, just to interject, that is consistent with Brownsville's practice. In Brownsville, the first time, you get a warning. And if you don't comply, then you get cited. But there is no obligation to give a repeat offender a warning. So after the first time, you just get cited, no warnings. You know, the fair in saying you have to have a warning is that the person does it every month, and then he complies, and so you write this endless series of warning letters.
Plus the administrative, the administration of that.
And that would not happen.
The, the problem is, is I know how it would be handled in, in this administration. But if we don't have that warning in there, I don't know what's gonna happen in another administration. I know that my intent is for those repeat offenders to be cited. And everywhere we can, give people enough warning. That's why I go out and visit the new people when they move to town, so they'll know when their brush pickup is, along with the laws and all of that. If you go down Balboa, it's the same people month in, week in, and week out. Just as, and I know that some people probably do it just to spite us. Because we've been on them, and been on them, and there's nothing we can do. We can't. And you say we can haul it away, but we really don't have the ability to haul it away. We can get somebody to come in and do it once or twice, but-
I, I totally agree that there, that repeat offenders should receive a citation. My only thought is, maybe we should plug into this ordinance that first offenders get a citation. As it reads right now, or first offenders get a warning, as it reads right now, they could be cited. And my concern is, what would future administrations?
What is, what, in your opinion, what would be a first offender?
Yeah, if this ordinance goes-
Is it the location? Is it the new property owner? Is it? I mean, let's say that Fifty Pizarro changed hands. So we're gonna need to know that to know that this person is the first hand, therefore, even though Fifty Pizarro, they got the warning earlier, this is the new owner, or they rented the house, or whatever they've done.
Well, that's a, that's a valid point.
The only thing about the warning that I see that, where my work is on-
The only thing about the warning that I see, that where my work is on people that are just moving in...
Absolutely.
On the first time, and, and they were not particularly a hundred percent aware of it. They get a warning and say, on the warning, this is when you're supposed to take the trash out.
I took, I stopped at a place on Sepulto, that had the brush out. And I know that that person has lived there for as long as I've lived here. Said, "What are you doing? Why'd you put it out?" "Oh, I didn't know it was supposed to be put out on a certain..." "Look up here at this street, a few blocks, they have it out, so I put mine out." Yes, sir?
So how, if the board could refresh my memory, how are town residents made aware of collection days and times?
We sent, we sent a notice to every location as to when the pickup was. Every location.
One-time notice, when? I mean, was it just a one-time mailing to, to residents?
I'm sure that it's more than that. I don't know how many mailings we've done. I've stopped at houses and talked to people that put it out. I've bagged their trash for them, their grass clippings for them. We send out letters every single month to violators, and they do it over and over again. Yes, ma'am?
Didn't GMS tell everybody also?
GMS sent, as, as part of their contract, when their schedule was.
If, if people don't know when that pickup schedule is, they've gotta have their head in the sand. I mean, it's...
I don't mean to harp on your web presence, but it's something I know best. And I think that website of the towns can be used, if not already, and I don't know...
It's on there.
For, collection times are on the website?
It's already on there.
I had all the gardeners in here twice. I had the police. As they rode around, every time they saw somebody taking care of the yard, invited them to a meeting down here where I explained it to all the gardeners, twice. And we did it in English, and we did it in Spanish. The reporter has an article about it all the time. I get a hundred emails a month about why we pick it up the brush. I spend more time on brush than I spend on anything else.
I guarantee that, uh, right now, it's kind of disregarded, and they're just being shut out any day they want. But if we start enforcing it this way, I guarantee that we can get a hundred percent compliance.
I'm willing to make a motion.
What if the gardeners had a notice, because we have gardeners moving in, and they probably don't know... You know, the owner may know, but the gardeners don't know to do what they're coming to do.
But the owners are...
But they've said, "Put them out on the street."
The owners are responsible for the property.
The owners should notify their gardeners.
And Phillies respond something the mayor said. He said, "Well, maybe they have a renter." That would not be a defense.
Maybe they have a...
A renter.
Oh, I see.
This citation goes to the owner.
Right.
And if the owner comes in and says, "Well, I leave that house."
Exactly. We had the same case on a...
That's tough.
On a wired fence over on fourteen, uh, the, where a rented house has a fence, and that's not a defense, the fact that they erected that piece of wall. I, I don't mind putting a provision of approving this, or not approving it, but having it approved with the provision that Mr. Renfro will put language in that a first time offender gets a notice. I don't mind doing that. Administratively, I don't like it, trying to keep up with when the house changes hands, and whether they've gotten a notice before, whether they haven't gotten a notice before. But, I don't mind doing that either.
I think that would be a wise decision in regards to how, we don't have any other way to communicate with our, our residents and property owners. We don't have a local newspaper, we can't put it in there. We'll put it in the reporter, but not everyone's a member of the Property Owners Association. But if we start sending out a warning or a notice that next time you will be cited. It might help.
My name is Mrs. P. I'm in Fifty Bizarro. And we had an incident with something like this before. My next door neighbor at thirteen came over to my house in the afternoon after we got our mail. We both had a citation for brush. While she was out during the day and while I was at work during the day, I'm assuming this was before I talked to our gardeners, had put the brush between the houses out of the street. Now, how are you, as a committee and your ordinance, gonna guarantee that the person getting cited and get the lien against them is the one putting the brush out there? I mean, and on the second thing, I've been cited once, Mrs. Van Bever's been cited once. If there's brush out there again, are we now automatically gonna be fined a hundred dollars a day?
First of all, we don't issue citations so far. You've got a letter saying that you've got ten days to correct that.
Right.
That's what we send out currently, we don't do...
That was the warning, or whatever.
Well, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a ten day notice.
It was, it was in language coached enough, that Mrs. Van Bever was very upset, and was screaming on the phone.
I've also talked to her.
She was upset.
The, the fact is that what she needed to do is call and say, "It's not mine."
And then you would come to me, and I would say, "That is my money." But it's sitting between the two houses.
But that's, that's all we can do. We'll find out where it goes. If it's sitting out there, it's either one or the other, we make the best call we can, or we send two letters, and whoever responds to it. And there is no automatic fine. There is no automatic fine.
But that's the way it's sounding like, what you want this ordinance to do, is give one warning that you have gotten it out too many, you know, too many days too early. And then the next time, it would be an automatic hundred dollar day fine for every day out there.
There's no, there's no automatic. You would be cited. You would come to the judge, and then the judge would make a determination. There's no, there's no automatic. The only automatic is, is if you don't respond to that ten day later within ten days, then it will automatically, a lien will be placed on your property, and that brush will be removed by us if we can find someone to do it. That would be automatic after ten days. But the citation, you would have to come before the court. And, and the judge would make a determination.
Excuse me?
Yes?
With your permission, um, so this brush was not yours, or your neighbor's?
As far as I know, it wasn't mine, and as far as she knows, it was not hers. And I mean, we're both sitting there, because like I said, she goes out during the day, and I work during the day.
All right.
And we were, you know, it was like, she was upset because I had, and I know my grandson had been at school all day, I had been at school all day. My other granddaughter had been at her job at school all day. And my four-year-old grandson can't stay at home and do brush during the day. So it was, you know, we were both very frustrated, and it's like, two days later, we found a mountain across the street, I think it was like number ten. A mountain, literally, the full length of their yard and a mountain, as high as the trees. And we don't know if it, but we don't know.
I understand what you're saying. Uh, Mayor, there was an incident, I believe, uh, next to Fifty Two Cortez. Some gardener was dumping all the brush at a home where the, um, homeowner was gone.
Gone during the day, exactly. And they were done. So she happened to go outside and, and ask him what he was doing, he said, "Oh, well, the trash, the brush will be picked up here next, so I don't know..."
If we find that, we'll prosecute them. I mean, that's illegal dumping. And they can absolutely be prosecuted. And if we sent a letter, or if we cited them, and it turned out not to be theirs, we're not gonna do anything about it. We're gonna, I mean, but we're all gonna find out who did it, or try to find out who did it. I mean, that's terrible. We got people all the time dumping trash in these bins out here. That's illegal, illegal private property. So, in your case, I'm sorry you got the letter, but there's no way for us to know that someone else put it there. But, once we talk to you...
I understand that, but I didn't know who else did it either.
Yeah.
And yet I felt like, you know, I mean, I understand that the letters have to be worded in a certain way, but, you know, my neighbor, who is a wonderful lady, and myself, we're both sitting there going, "I'm being attacked for something I didn't do and knew nothing about."
Yeah. But, but don't, don't take it as an attack. Take it that it's unfortunate.
It wasn't politely said that, you know, "If it's your trash, please get it off the street immediately or face consequences." You know, that wasn't exactly a nice way to say, "Did you do this? Remember the date is? Please, you know, from now on, adjust to that hate." It was, it was not...
Maybe you ought to have a thousand dollar fine for anybody caught, uh, putting the trash...
Dumping their trash.
Other than on their own property.
What can we pay? If they dump trash, I'm, I'm... Whatever the court decides.
A classy misdemeanor, the limit's five hundred dollars. What you would have to do to get above a classy misdemeanor? I, I don't know, but you couldn't...
Make it up there. You'd have to go by weight and so forth.
You couldn't try them in this court.
No, 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 no. It'd be...
Is this like a bar exam?
Yeah. One of the things that we have decided to stop doing, and that is to cite people or to send out a ten day letter on palm fronds. Because that's, that's nobody's intent. They blow off the, the palm trees. So, it's terrible that they do that. I wish people would cut their palm trees back, then we, we wouldn't have those blowing palm fronds. But when they do, some people like me, pick them up by the street, put them in the yard next to where I am, and that may not be anywhere near where they came from.
One other question on the ordinance, which I'm not sure about, but it came up the last time we had big rain and wind. Rain just come down out of the trees, especially when there's not the season for leaves. Are you gonna have any kind of stipulation on emergency things that come through, where you end up with brush that has to be put out, or do you put it in the backyard patio, or...
You put it aside or back of your house through that thing. And we won't, it's only when it goes out to the street.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I, uh, make a motion that we approve this ordinance, subject to one change. That the first offense be a warning. And, uh, subsequent to that, fines or restitution, so.
Your second? All in favor? Thank you all. Uh, number fourteen, consideration of appointment of member and alternate to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Uh, we've had a person that has had to drop off because of job requirements off the Board of Appeals and Adjustments, and Bill Sharp was an alternate, and he has, uh, pending approval of the board, he has agreed to work as an act, as a regular member. So I'd like to appoint Bill Sharp to the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. Do you hear motion to approve that?
I'm making a motion to approve Bill Sharp.
Second?
All in favor? Number fifteen, consideration approval of ordinance for codification, we're not ready for that order.
I'll just inform the board, this came up at the, at the workshop meeting. Ten days ago, I sent the codification company, or responded saying, "We're ready to approve this." I heard nothing back from them until yesterday. In which, they sent me the same drafts that I had nine months ago. So, the, I think Cheryl gave you each a CD, that is the draft, since it's gonna be tabled. Oh, she's got it here. I have copies for each of you on CD, if you wanna look at them. I will then do what needs to be done to get this ready for the July meeting.
So it's tabled?
So I would suggest...
Hear motion to table, uh, number fifteen?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Number sixteen, discussion of having waste removal contract by paying by the town to include this line out of the town budget. Let me, before we get very far in that, let me just tell you real quickly the problems with that. First of all, to have the brush removal put in our taxes, it's gonna increase taxes by some seven cents, uh, one hundred. So we go approximately from thirty-six cents to forty-three cents on just the waste removal put in. If we have an increase over a certain amount, which this is, we could have a rollback petition. And that, and there's not a high requirement of signatures for that. And they could roll back the, uh, the tax that we add on to it. Secondly, there are special considerations that we can't take into consideration, and that is vacant lots, hotel, that does it daily, things of that nature. I would prefer that we don't put it on there, and don't run the risk of a rollback election. And have an ordinance be prepared that would, we could cite a resident that did not live up to the ordinance, and fine that person. Now, we have to be real careful here, because it's not, it's probably not legal for us to fine a person that doesn't pay a bill. So this would be not because they didn't pay the bill, but because they didn't live up to the ordinance, that didn't take out the GMS.
Can, can a resident be, is it all right for us to fine a resident who puts their trash out to be collected, but because GMS hasn't been paid, they don't pick it up, so their trash is left?
Well, I've expressed this before, in my opinion, GMS does not have the right to do that.
What, what Mr. Renfro has said is that GMS is required to pick up the trash from every resident registered.
And GMS indicates that that's not part of the contract?
I think they're wrong.
Excuse me, uh, they don't, they have at least the bills that have paid and have not paid.
Right. But the, but the contract says the risk of collection is on them.
And for us, we gave them a citywide contract, so don't they have to pick up everything in the city?
That is my opinion.
That's, that's Dan's opinion, but it's not, uh, GMS's opinion.
Because I understand that there are not very many residences like that. That is not the big problem, where they put the trash out but don't pay.
No, but we have approximately seven hundred and fifty people that take out the, uh, GMS trash removal, and a hundred and fifty that do not. That's about what the figures are. Not exact, but approximately seven fifty and one fifty.
I understand that the issue is people that don't pay, but then don't put any trash out. Take it to work, or throw it in the neighbor's van, or whatever, but...
And including the bins that are, are at Stripes, uh, the apartments, and so forth. But also, one of the problems that we have is that people dump their brush over on the Hilda go between Cortez and the maintenance farm. And we have to spend money to have that picked up. So we have illegal dumping because they don't have a GMS contract that would otherwise pick up their brush. Yes, sir?
Isn't there already an ordinance that says that every homeowner has to have, uh...
That's correct.
So, basically, it is not an enforcing existing ordinance?
You, you'd have to go after a hundred seventy-five dollars. And our legal fees would be higher than what we would get back for that. But, from what Mr. Renfro has said, that that is the responsibility of GMS to do that. Their responsibility is, one, to pick up the trash for everyone, and, two, to collect from everyone. We would assist that, but it's their responsibility. They want to take them to small claims court, or whatever they want to do. I would like to go further than that, and assist in that, is that we would then have the right to cite any person that doesn't comply with that ordinance. Yes, sir?
Again, last year, we had a lot of discussion about this. And there was one gentleman in here who lives alone, and he takes his trash to work. And he said, "Why should I have to pay for it? Because I make maybe one small bag a week." And then there's, uh, another person who works for a club and has permission to take their trash and put it in the club's dumpsters. And then there's people who live in Mexico, or out of town.
Or winter Texans, or whatever.
Winter Texans, and I mean...
If you live in Rancho, that's what you do. And, and I don't travel on, uh, uh, bullie ball. So I probably don't wanna pay for the resurfacing of that street.
I pay for insurance on my house, and I haven't collected any yet.
Uh, just...
Three of the police officers haven't stopped me.
All the discussion we had last year, Gene.
Three of the police officers haven't stopped me. I don't wanna pay their salary. I'm not sure that Cheryl's ever helped me out, I don't think we're... As part of being in the city, you have to live according to those ordinance that we have.
I don't disagree with that, just that we've had a lot of discussion last year.
Some of those people that say, "I take it to work," never make it out of Rancho with it. They stop at the nearest collector, bin collector, and pour it in there. And then they go to... work.
It's a choice to live here.
Or, they lift the lid on the neighbor's yard, and throw their bag in there, and five-thirty in the morning, it didn't take off. I just think that we need to have that option of, of helping require GMS to pick up every single resident, I don't care whether they have a contract or not, and the assistance we can give them in the collection is that we have the right to cite a person that doesn't take out that contract. Not that we will, but we have that right.
I would rather see us go that direction than try to pin something on our taxes. I just don't think that's feasible.
Mayor, with your permission...
Yes.
I feel strongly that we should not have it on our tax rolls, because then we are liable to lose our home for a hundred and eighty-five dollars, or whatever. And, you know, most of us, the percentage there is, is high, seven hundred and fifty, versus the one fifty that do not pay, but does it, GMS, if we have a contract with them, should be responsible for the administrative cost of dealing these people, or making sure that they're paid? I mean, I don't think the town was willing. We have a contract with them, we should, just like any other service. They're responsible.
We can force that issue, and we can let them represent the town of Rancho Viejo against whoever their attorney is, to ensure that we get that done. But at the same time, if we had the ability to, it's just my opinion, anyway. I'm not saying we, it's, and you notice, it's not an action item, but it's just my opinion, that if we had some other way to induce them, or entice them to take out that trash, we would have less problems. Somebody's always gonna try to find a way to serve them, and it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year, this year, plus taxes. It's not a huge amount.
Mayor, exactly what problem are you trying to solve? People not paying their bill?
No.
People putting trash outside their house in a bin? What precisely are you trying to solve? People not putting trash in a bin? People dumping?
I don't care anything about whether they pay the bill or not, that's not up to me.
What, what, I'm not clear.
I try to keep the trash from being dumped illegally, put in their neighbor's yard, put out there for pickup, even though they don't have a contract, and they're Mexican nationals, and they're only here for those six weeks or four weeks, and leaving it out there until their neighbor gets tired of it, and puts it in their trash to be taken away, and then has to put their container bag out, so it won't blow around the highway.
So, are you in effect forcing people to enter in the contract, or to pay with GMS? Is that what...
I'm not gonna for, I can't force them to pay. But, we have, we already have an ordinance. It's not new. We have an ordinance.
I assume we have a dumping ordinance?
No.
Or a legal dumping ordinance?
No, I think there's probably state law on that.
Okay.
But we have an ordinance that says you're required to take it out. I just wanna put some teeth in that, it is, if you don't take it out, that we have something that we could do, other than take them to court. Take them to municipal court. All I want to do is live up to the ordinance that Rancho Viejo has, or take the ordinance off the board.
Well, and, and we have really two issues, one with GMS not picking up from those farms that are not paid. We need to address that, but yes, we certainly need to address the ordinance.
With your permission, Mayor, some of the absentee homeowners were expressing desire to pay six months instead of a full year, because they're not here the full year of that town, and, and they would better pay six months.
I'd rather only pay the month that I have a lot of trash. But, that ordinance is here, they don't have to buy, I know this is gonna sound cold, they don't have to buy a home in Rancho Viejo.
That's true.
They can go somewhere else. We have that ordinance, it was on the books, it's not hidden. They bought a house here, they ought to comply with the ordinance that's here, and not just pick and choose which ones they like to comply with. Or, we ought to get rid of the ordinance. Any more discussion on that? Okay. Any hard feelings one way or the other, Carl, Mike, Gene?
I, I would just like to see GMS be held to the fire in regards to the issue of picking up everyone's trash, whether they're paid or not, because my understanding clearly was, when I first became an alderman, that that was their contract. They were granted an exclusive contract with Rancho Viejo, they have no competition, and for that, they were going to pick up everyone's trash.
I think you're right there. We will do that, by the way. But, should we hold the property owners' feet to the fire also?
To do what precisely? To pay, or to...
Well, Chris, to take out the contract. I mean, not the contract, to live up to the ordinance.
Of just taking care of their trash?
The ordinance says that they will take out the trash from the pe, from the company that has been approved by Rancho Viejo Board of Aldermen. Yes, sir.
Are you talking garbage, or are you only talking brush now?
It's the same contract.
Yeah, I know it is, but, oh, you're talking garbage right now.
I'm talking about the GMS contract.
Right, which, which is garbage and trash.
That's correct.
So, you're considering the whole thing, this ordinance?
When you, well, the ordinance is already there, and it doesn't specify pieces of the contract. You have to take out that, that the town alderman approved, for the trash removal company.
Copy of the ordinance I got didn't have trash in the same ordinance as garbage.
I think it's termed waste, is like throwing everything?
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy.
I read the thing, and it's a garbage, and then I know the trash is like twelve dollars a year on top of that.
I don't know the distinctions between garbage and trash.
Yeah.
Brush, brush.
Brush is different.
Brush.
But brush is different only if it's, if it's larger than a bundle that is three feet long, and not bad, so, so brush depends on whether it's large brush or small brush, you know, so, but it's all part of the same contract, and it's all priced as the same. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars.
The one I had was, it was a hundred and seventy-five, and then there was twelve for, oh, trash, or for...
Brush. For brush. Yes, there is a distinction.
So, it was a hundred and eighty-seven altogether.
But you're required to take the entire service.
But, but that's not correct. The contract that we have is one figure, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a year. For this year, there's not a separate price or add-on for twelve dollars or anything else for brush.
Then the contract I got from our lady friend is not the one that you're using.
I don't know.
I read it.
So have I, Dick.
And it doesn't say.
It, it, it doesn't have brush pickup add-on for one month, once a month, is twelve dollars. Our contract doesn't. Let, let me review that. I, I, I have been wrong so many times when I say something absolute, let me take the chance that I'm wrong again, and I'll review that, but I feel fairly certain that it doesn't have a separate price, that you can't take it out. Yes, Mayor?
One of the reasons I think it's important for the county trying to get as much compliance with the people living here, to participate along with everyone else in supporting the cleanliness and the trash pickup, the garbage pickup for the community, is the fact that, granted, we've got a contract in place now for several more years, but one of these days, that's gonna come up with renewal, and so you're gonna have people out there who are going to then be bidding for a contract to pick up the trash, and whether it's one, or two, or whatever, whatever price they give you, is going to be based on, obviously, they can't run a business not making some profit, and so they're gonna base that on what they assume the revenues are gonna be, as opposed to what their cost is gonna be. And, so, you have a community of where, I don't, I don't know math wizard, but when you have a percentage of a hundred and fifty out of, out of the overall, you have seven hundred and fifty that are paying their fair share, and a hundred and fifty who are not carrying the ball and paying their fair share, as far as the community is concerned, well, you know, that's just eroding out what their revenues are gonna be, so the next time that they, you have your contract bid, it's gonna cost all of us who are paying for the trash pickup, a lot more money, because nobody, whether it's GMS, or BFI, or whoever's in business at the time, or whether it's three different people coming out here, they're not going to propose to do trash pickup for a price to lose money. And so, it's advantageous for everyone in this community to share that cost. So, if, if seven hundred and fifty of us are paying for, for the trash where, where a large percentage of the community is not supporting that necessary amendment, then it's just gonna cost everybody else more money. Eventually, it's gonna happen.
Exactly right. It's perfect to cut out. All right, moving on. Number seventeen, consideration of action on employment of reserve police officer. Gene, would you present the reserve police officer to us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Board of Aldermen. I'd like to present, uh, Ponzo Abia. Uh, he's an applicant for a reserve position that we have. He resides in Brownsville, he's a graduate of, uh, Cribeta High School, he graduated in two thousand and four. He attended the UTV College, and attended the Police Academy there. Uh, he graduated March of oh-seven. We've done the background check on him, he's, uh, got a clean background. I'd like to recommend that we hire him as a reserve officer for the town of Rancho Viejo.
What experience do you have?
Police Academy, workforce security company, American investigations. Worked there then, what?
Are you currently working there?
No, I'm just graduated from the Police Academy.
Anybody else have any questions? The last reserve police officer we have is now working, and I'm gonna tell ya, I had a person tell me today what a gentleman Luis is, and that's pretty good. If you can, if you stop someone, then they say that you're a gentleman. Have to stop that. That's a pretty good compliment, so.
Thank you.
I, I, we really did good with that one, and I absolutely trust the chief judgment.
Appreciate that, Mayor. So, with your approval, I'd like to get started tomorrow with the possibility of reserve starting pay of ten dollars, an hour flat rate.
Do you hear motion to approve?
Sure move.
Second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Hurricane preparedness. Number eighteen, we are, uh, we have a hurricane preparedness manual, and in this manual, it's been updated to have the correct names, peoples, numbers, and so forth. In our, we've decided to have a meeting on July the nineteenth, and we will send a letter out to every resident. We'll put it on the website, we'll send it out in email, and we'll send a letter out to every resident in Rancho Viejo, inviting them here to go through the presentation of hurricane preparedness. We're gonna have guest speakers here from the county, and possibly other officials, too. And the thing that we really wanna get across, really wanna get across, is how important it is for them to register if they need medical attention when they're gonna evacuate. Number two, if they don't have transportation. The critical issues for us are, how many vehicles are we gonna need to take people away? How many ambulances, or how many special vehicles, we're gonna need to take people away? We've got a couple of vans, we can get about thirty people or so out, but you don't know about dogs and all that, so not, not exact. And we have a list of what? Only a few people that need medical, which could be oxygen, it could be whatever, beds or whatever, to move them, but we need to get as many people on that list, so we don't find out when a hurricane's here. The plan is that we're gonna evacuate a hurricane, uh, excuse me, we're gonna evacuate those that need medical attention early, like Cuba, or once they say it's headed this way. The people that don't have transportation will be shortly, but somewhat behind them, and then, the city would not be evacuated unless it was going to be a category five, mandatory evacuation, category five, category four-two, just five, isn't it?
Usually, they'll evacuate at a high four, five definitely.
Yeah. But that will be called for at a later time than when we did that. But, we wanna make sure that everyone knows what the routes are, and what's gonna happen. You go to San Bernardino, uh, the ones that need transportation, and then they put out buses and take them to San Antonio, we're gonna go two-eighty-one, it's gonna be contract, flow of traffic, they're gonna have trucks with gas, they're gonna have, uh, stations open for gas when it's there. Not sure exactly what they're gonna do on immigration, but they're gonna try to speed the traffic through, the immigration stuff. But we wanna keep everybody abreast of that, and have people down here. Now, I don't know how many people we'll get, but we're gonna try to get everybody from Rancho to come. We're gonna try to organize the meeting for those people that need medical or transportation needs, can, can hear what they need to do on the early part of the meeting, so if they have to leave or go home, they can get out and find out what they need to do, and put the rest of it on the tail end of the meeting. And that's gonna be on July the nineteenth, at six o'clock.
Excuse me, Mayor, is that similar to the meeting you had last year?
No. Last year, we had the Weather Service making a presentation on histories of that, and predictions and so forth. This time, we're gonna do more along the lines of what we're gonna do in the case of evacuations, what the state has done, the county has done, and the county has done, and present to the, to the people here what our plan is for moving out, along with the county coordinators, and maybe the, uh, other officials that we might be able to get to come down and make a presentation. But it's gonna be more on what we're gonna do during an evacuation. Also, probably explain our new sand, our sandless sandbags to, to people that wanna pick those up. And maybe, I don't know, we'll get one and do a demonstration of it, where we can show people that the sandless sandbag really works. And if anyone mentions to you that, "What are we doing?" We have this book, and it's available for anyone to review, or to get copies of, or whatever. It is fairly thorough, and the chief absolutely has gone to, uh, six hundred dollars a motel room's worth of meetings. To keep abreast of what the state is requiring, and what they're doing with this. So, I think the chief has done a real good job of keeping up with it. The state, of course, is very concerned that everyone knows about it, and has probably, I, I guess you can't over-prepare, but if you can over-prepare, then the state, that's what the state's doing, in this case. Do you have any words to add to that, Gene?
That's what you basically covered.
Except the six hundred really was...
Yeah, one really was six hundred. There was only five of them, I got them.
Happy time is number nineteen on the agenda. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
I motioned, uh, to adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.